Section five of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five. Be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting it on the Baltimore Town Hall and sending to officially designated newspapers indicating that the meeting will take place at the convenience center at six thirty P M. on the state. The fire exits are located in the far right corner of the back and to my immediate left and front. For Resolution one fifty-six dash twenty, establishing rule of conduct in the court for public meetings, please be advised that all members of the public must step up to the designated public microphone, state the director of the name and address before addressing mayor and council. For roll call, I have one more square to get to. Mr. Lee? Hi, Andrew Agliata.
Hi, Andrew Agliata.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And allegiance. To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Now faithfully.
Now faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of councilman.
Of the office of councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I love you guys so much. Roll call.
Councilman Agliata.
Here.
Councilman Heen.
Here.
Councilman Hurley.
Here.
Councilman Metzger.
Here.
Councilman Sotomayor.
Here.
Councilman Fong number.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got approval in minutes. Regular meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, revised, regular meeting, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, revised, regular meeting, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. No motion?
Motion, second.
All favor.
All right.
Council reports, Councilman Slakbar.
Evening, Mayor, Council, where residents. Hope everybody's still okay with the cold there, it's almost over. The only thing I have to report tonight, Mayor, is we will be having an orange meeting on the sixteenth, which will be at four thirty.
A lot of things stacked up.
We're just still looking at things we left behind, uh, two thousand twenty-four, so we'll move ahead. That's right, thank you.
Great, thanks. Motion to accept report, Councilman Slakbar.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. Councilman Hayes.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow members of our public. Uh, D P W report, um, since the beginning of the new year, the, uh, D P W team has been out taking care of a few ice and snow events. Uh, also, they're in the process of picking up Christmas trees, and they will be doing so until January twenty-fourth. Beginning next week on Monday, they're gonna be taking down all the holiday decorations. And as some of you may recall, um, apparently last year, the Morris County M U A was doing an inspection of recycling. Uh, due to the borough's efforts and Billy's team, we did win a recognition of award from the Morris County Director. And the email states, dear Billy, good afternoon, on behalf of the Morris County M U A, I would like to extend my sincere thank you to Ronnie, to you, Ronnie, and the entire D P W staff for your invaluable assistance with this initiative. The tax is the same copy of the award that will be delivered to you in the Office for Recognition. Couple of bullet points, uh, the borough's residents' recycling set outs were among the best compared to those of others in the, in the Morris County municipality. Our joint inspections of these materials resulted in more, many more positive acknowledgements than violations for the randomly selected samples, which speaks to Billy and the team's education, recycling programs, and their overall efforts. Also, Rockaway Borough is one of the higher, um, ones that use the recycling app. Apparently, we use, uh, fifty-three percent of our residents use the recycling app. And, uh, you know, they, they're looking forward to working with us from, uh, next year, and this is from Anthony Marrone, who is the recycling, uh, district recycling coordinator for Morris County in New York. So congratulations to Billy and his team on those efforts. Uh, I did get to attend the reorg for the Rockaway Borough Board of Education. There were two bright new members this year on the board, Vanessa Dorjilis, who has, uh, two children in the school district, and Faridi Hernandez. So, meeting was, there wasn't much, just like our reorg, there wasn't much discussion about a lot of things, so I'll report more in the next, and that is my view.
Great, thanks. Motion to accept report, Councilman Hayes.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. Councilman Fallow.
Good evening, everybody, uh, no report today, but just letting you know our next and first meeting of the year for the Reformation Committee will be on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth at seven P M. Uh, I know they'll be discussing some of the upcoming projects for the year and finalizing some of those, uh, projects as well. Now, more information at that meeting.
Motion to accept report, Councilman Fallow. Second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Councilman Harley.
Thank you, Mayor. The council members and members of our public will start off with the Finance Committee, uh, for a series of invoices for payment in twenty twenty-five. I move that the bills presented to Borough of Rockaway for payment by the Borough as evidenced by proper vouchers be referred to the committee or unit contracting for same and when endorsed by them and approved by appropriate action of council, they are to be paid.
I'm second.
I'm sorry.
I'm all right.
And just briefly, a quick reminder, if you haven't already, save the date for February one, February eighth, February fifteenth, February twenty-second, and March first, we start our budget meetings, right here, nine A M., those Saturday mornings. Uh, for some council activities, myself and Ms. Royce, we met again with the D P W negotiating team this afternoon. Good continued dialogue and discussion, and we're scheduled to meet again on February the fifth. Uh, attended the Land Use Board Reorganization meeting earlier on this weekend, on Tuesday, and just around the town, uh, kudos to the Fire Department, attended their annual twenty twenty-five Officers' Induction and their reception dance, there's a great job, and we, uh, look forward to working with, uh, Chief Van Siders, and we thank Chief Sapiador for his leadership last year, and that's my report, ma'am.
Motion to accept report, Councilman Harley.
Motion.
Second. All favor.
Hi.
Councilman Agliata.
Uh, and Mayor, Council, good evening, everybody, happy new year to all. Uh, nothing much to report, aside from attending the, uh, uh, first meeting of the entire department last night with Commissioner Burnside. Uh, I know the first fourth health meeting, I believe it is January fourteenth, I do believe it's virtual only, though, if the website is correct, so if you're looking to come down, I, yeah, I'll go. All right, so virtual only, that's from January fourteenth, hope, uh, hope everybody will, uh, log in and attend, that's all I got.
Great, thanks, and, uh, with that, uh, Andrew was appointed, uh, liaison, so congrats, and, uh, thanks for taking on that. Motion to accept report, Councilman Agliata.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor. Mr. President, President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, for the first time, I'm going to report on police department activity in the month of December. They responded to one thousand one hundred and thirty-four calls for service. That is amazing to me. Thirty-six motor vehicle crash investigations, fifteen traffic stops, nineteen citations, twelve moving violations, one equipment violation, four parking violations, two classified as other, and there were three arrests. On December twelfth, risk consultant chief John Schwartz from J A Montgomery Consulting, working on behalf of the Morris County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, met with Chief Pepperman and Lieutenant Richardson to discuss current law enforcement trends, policy development, and training resources. The consulting group designs and implements complete risk control and safety programs. The loss control visitation is used to identify current trends and assist clients with the challenges of the law enforcement profession. Over twenty-five topics were discussed during the visitation. Chief Schwartz's assessment indicated that the Rockaway Borough Police Department utilizes model policies, procedures, and the best business practices. Chief Pepperman and the members of the police staff are focused on professionalism, officer safety, and the liability issues that challenge the law enforcement community. At this time, there were no suggestions made for improvement, so that's quite a good report. Um, I would like to report on year-end fire department activity, because I think these numbers are also very significant. So, in twenty twenty-four, the Fire Department respo- responded to one house structure fire, responded to sixteen smoke conditions, two vehicle fires, thirteen reports of brush or rubbish fire, eighty-six fire app alarm activations, eighteen carbon monoxide alarms, seventeen electrical fire or wire issues. Uh, they responded to twenty-six incidents of mutual aid, which is, really shows their skill and how they're in demand. They did eighteen training drills, um, for a, a total of two hundred and fifty incidents. Their emergency response hours were one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three, six hundred and twenty-three hours of training, two hundred and thirty-four hours related to fire prevention or community events, and then a hundred and fifty-two hours for maintenance. So, the volunteer hours in the Rockaway Borough Fire Department totaled two thousand eight hundred and ninety-two hours over the year. It's incredible, right? Um, along with Councilman Agliata, I attended the monthly meeting of the Fire Department last evening. It was great to be able to congratulate them on a wonderful twenty twenty-four and also congratulate the new officers, um, for this year. Um, last evening, the Fire Department took the following actions, they scheduled drills on January fifteenth and twenty-ninth, they accepted the resignations of Brian Rodriguez and Andrew Kalinsky, they also accepted the applications for Rob DeVito Junior and Matt Lowery for active membership. Um, interesting, uh, Rob, who we met last night, is actually a police officer in Bergen County, he has been a volunteer fire, um, man there, but he lives in the borough, and he's excited to join the, the, uh, department. May I have a motion to approve the actions of the Fire Department?
Motion to approve actions of the Fire Department?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Um, I would like to schedule a fire committee meeting, um, so maybe we can do that before we leave tonight. Um, and I also do want to share some dates, um, for the general public, the family festival will be scheduled for July twelfth, and I think they're looking to add some interesting components this year. Um, and for us, the cheese party is scheduled for March eighth. That concludes my report.
Great, thanks. Yes, it's tough to see, uh, Brian Rodriguez go, he's a, he's state trooper, I'm sure he's, uh, he's a job keeper on the work business, so, uh, sorry to see him go. Do you remain in the borough, I'll say. Motion to accept report, the Council President.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Good evening, everybody, uh, I have no report for tonight.
I'm, uh, according to Mayor, on January first, I had the honor of swearing in the new Fire Chief, uh, Joe Van Siders, the second Assistant Fire Chief, Glenn Van Siders, and the third Assistant Chief, uh, Jeff Heintzler. So, it's always, uh, a pleasure to be in front of those guys and be able to do that for them, so, but, you know, I concur with everything he said, with all the, uh, good things about the Fire Department, so.
Motion to accept report, the Mayor.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
For the Administrator.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year. Um, I have no report, I just need to put a closed session of our communication.
Motion to accept report, the Administrator.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
For the Clerk.
Only thing I have is just to let everyone know that the primary election has been rescheduled from June third to June tenth, to get a holiday.
Motion to accept report, uh, the Clerk. Second. All favor.
All right.
Two resolutions offered tonight, uh, twenty-seven dash twenty-five, appointment of confidential assistants to the Chief of Police, twenty-eight dash twenty-five, resignation of Department of Public Works Labor. Got a motion?
Sorry. Roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata.
Yes.
Councilman Heen.
Yes.
Councilman Hurley.
Yes.
Councilman Metzger.
Yes.
Councilman Soto.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
We have two orders for introduction. Twenty-five oh one, municipal award utility salaries, salaries, twenty-five dash oh two, exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish a cap. Uh, got a motion for twenty-five oh one.
Motion for twenty-five oh one.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata.
Yes.
Councilman Heen.
Yes.
Councilman Metzger.
Yes.
Councilman Metzger.
Yes.
Councilman Soto.
Yes.
Councilman President.
Yes.
Got a motion for twenty-five zero two?
Motion for twenty-five zero two.
Second. Did that, roll call, please.
Councilman Agliata.
Yes.
Councilman Heen.
Yes.
Councilman Hurley.
Yes.
Councilman Metzger.
Yes.
Councilman Slakbar.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
I'd like to open the meeting to the public.
Katie Park, sixty-six plus Black Street, happy new year, everybody.
There you are.
Uh, one little thing before I get started, uh, on the agenda, I, I think this more came, on the resolutions, it says twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-eight, twenty-five, but then when you have them on the next page, they switch, I think you just need to flip them. Yeah?
Yes.
Right? Um, but anyway, that wasn't what I came to say, um, I wanted to say, uh, congratulations to Mr. Hurley and Mr. Haynes for being sworn in, um, last week, same with you too, Mr. Agliata, today. Um, I'd like to ask you all if there's anything you'd like to say to the residents, um, who voted for you in November, um, and also ask what are your top priorities for Rockaway Borough in twenty twenty-five, um, and what are you hoping to accomplish in this term that you haven't in previous terms?
I mean, as usual, Jim, myself, and Andrew all look forward to serving the Borough in the best of our ability. As someone who's lived here for fifty-plus years, I definitely have a interest in our town, I'd like to see, my biggest thing for this year is to finish up our downtown redevelopment. We've got a few things started, it seemed to be a little stalled, but hopefully a little, little kick in the butt to move forward, but, um, no, I've, I've been raised here, I've been here since I've been ten years old, I'm in the twilight of my life now, and I love the Borough.
Don't say that, I'm saying hey, do not, you're a peak.
I'm, I'm here to, uh, serve the Borough in the best of my ability and capability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is my, will be my first full official term, so I spent, uh, the remainder of last term learning what happens, and, uh, looking to be much more proactive with this first full term, uh, or first full year that I have here. My son is growing up in this town, so I am, uh, I have a vested interest in the future of this community, seeing as how my son is being raised here. I'm happy, uh, to see the progress that's been made with the development of downtown, you know, vacancies are starting to finally be utilized, and businesses are opening up, Maximos, uh, chicken wings and things, you know, we're seeing some, some positive steps in the right direction, I'm happy to provide and, and be a part of that progression.
Okay, thank you. Is that all right?
You're nearly fifty, I'm forty-seven, so between the two of us, we just perched in a hundred. Really, what I'm all looking at, again, from my wheelhouse in finance, is taking a look at keeping this community affordable, and, and I hear it quite often about what we can do with taxes. As you know, I'm a big advocate of grants, I'm a big advocate of shared services, um, working with our CFO, Ms. Royce, exploring those opportunities to, uh, keep our community vibrant, but then within reason on what they pay for those services within the town and what more we can afford to provide them with. Uh, around town, I mean, just some of the things that are my personal interest, I'd really love to see is continue on Park Lake, and let's do something over there with the beach area and clean that up, continue the path, um, working with Councilman Haynes and, and others on the redevelopment, I think there's revenue opportunities through tax ratables, uh, that we can accomplish there, again, going back to my, uh, my position in the wheelhouse of, of finance, uh, but really taking a look at how we can really enhance downtown, but also invite it as a more, I, I would say encouraging community as the individual who did that great video, uh, for us and, uh, posted, uh, had mentioned that there's a lot of opportunities here, so, uh, I would say those are the, the two big things that I have, and then also, and, you know, my little historical side of the town, uh, this is gonna be the, um, big two fifty year, so, uh, we're looking to, um, have some nice activities to go on, uh, for, um, Rev. two fifty.
Great, thank you, thanks to all, very nice.
Sure.
Um, now question for the Mayor, um, at the end of last year, we were supposed to receive a payment from the Vanderhoof developers.
We did.
We, we got it?
Yeah, I, I don't have to go.
Oh, good.
It was actually handled later.
Did you see that they resold that one?
Yeah, they resold it for double the price and, uh...
What's going on there?
What's that?
What's going on there?
So basically, I think it's a, a benefit to us that they sold it, because it's being sold to a moving company.
Okay.
So you're gonna have some trucks, but you're not gonna have the twenty-four-seven, uh, Sprinter vehicles, other vehicles constantly going through our streets, so I think from a traffic standpoint, I think it'll be a, it's, it's better for our town.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I'm about to ask regarding the cannabis payments for the last quarter of twenty-four, I don't know if it's too soon to have received those yet?
Yes.
You how, oh, it's too soon?
No, we've received it, uh, it's received.
About how much?
I'm not going to get it. There was the, the one I told you was eight thousand and sixty, was it fourth quarter or eighth quarter? I have to read it. No, we're probably, you know, I'm not really sure.
You know what?
I have to try to check.
Can you, can you follow up?
Yeah, let me follow up on that, only because I think they come in so late, it's like fourth quarter.
I mean, it's only the ninth today, I was, I was hoping, um, okay. Um, but when we do get that money in, you're gonna be putting some back in the surplus, right, and whatever, I mean, all of it would go in surplus, I guess, but is there other plans to use those funds, again, in the same way that you did this past year?
And I'll need to...
Some of those, some of those discussions during the budget session.
Okay, I'll leave that for then, all right, uh, and then, the April oil property on forty-sixth, last time, at the last meeting in December, um, the attorney had said, oh, we don't know when we're gonna get the grant, we just got a lead time, but he didn't mention what that lead time was, so do we have a...
April. We'll delay this on that.
Lead time for what?
To get the grant, to receive it, right, because once you receive it, you're gonna give it to the remuneration company, they're gonna do that assessment.
So, when we receive it.
Yeah.
We'll get the full money, but then they'll do the job, and then we will not give them the whole percent, they will, and they'll bill us accordingly, so, yeah, so, we haven't received that money yet.
Yeah, I understand, I was just asking for some sort of timeframe, when you're...
When the state sends it to us, I'll let you know.
So, when you applied, when you get confirmation that you applied, and that you, you're getting it, did they give you a lead time on when to expect it?
No.
Oh, that's not what the attorney said, but okay, thank you. Um, and the last thing, um, because this is what I do, Mayor, I saw your statement, um, on the website, twenty-three-five, your, your annual statement, you know, the, the one that you issue every year, say, so thank you, I did read it, I also saw that it was published in The Citizen, um, I'll just show you. Here, your statements from the past four years are basically the same, and they, like, word for word, so I'd mark some more up for you here, just to see, so you can see by the paragraphs or verbatim, and I just encourage you to, um, make more of an effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counsel for the public?
Yes, Spawney Hook, twenty-three Jackson, um, I was wondering, um, about the minute, revised minutes, way back to June of twenty-four and November, I was wondering what the problem was.
Uh, there was something in our, our form of council memory.
Yeah, there was a, quite frankly, it's not anything that is required to be revised, because it really had nothing, changes nothing with the official action, but it was an inaccuracy that was brought to our attention, so, uh, the clerk took her bond herself to correct the, uh, inaccuracy, and it's gonna be reflected in the minutes, but it really just had to do with, uh, the nomination for, uh, the voting for the replacement of the council seat.
Okay, okay. Um, then, Patty, you mentioned you were sending out letters for, uh, the River Bank, you know, announcements, I guess?
Well, I did, they were coming up with the, uh, the engineer, they just haven't gone out yet, they're, um, we have to wait till we submit, and then, I'm sorry, it's had to be done before we submit, so we're still putting together that information, I believe I said it, they'll be out by the end of January.
Okay, 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 and, um, one thing I'd like to ask either the Mayor or Patty, I don't know who would answer this, but I'd like to know the procedure of the liaisons and what you expect of your liaisons to come back to this council and report from a meeting, uh, because I hear no report, no report, no report so many times, and, you know, I just wanna know what the requirements are, or what you expect of your council.
No, there's something actionable, reportable, uh, police fire, ordinance, finance, D P W recreation, uh, certainly the report information that they think is relevant.
Okay, so you expect to report at every meeting after they've been to one, then?
Yeah, they should, uh, report.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make that clear, just that I'm not expecting something I shouldn't, okay? Thank you.
Can I go there? In that regard, I would tell you from doing this in various places all over, uh, the mayor here and the council, uh, demand more themselves than is usually the case, and what I, what I mean by that is, any meeting where the council issues a report is basically what they call a work session. Most councils only have a work session once a month or every other month, but this council does it where every meeting is a work session, so, most of these reports and every other place are, are few and far between, and not as regular or as frequent as here, so I thought that should be pointed out.
Thank you, thanks. Any other counsel for the public?
Um, sorry, I forgot something, um, I watched the land use board meeting, um, or the reorg from last week, they mentioned at the end about, oh, there's some big application or big presentation coming, um, can you give any insight into what that is that's coming in before the land use board?
Uh, Council, do you recall anything from the reorg?
No, the chairman just mentioned that there was something, that's what you said, there was something, I, I had no information on what that application is or who it's from. He didn't share any information about that.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, because I know, I emailed the board secretary, the land use board secretary, I think, yesterday, uh, regarding all the applications used from the websites, all the pending stuff, you know, Starbucks was on there, Wendy's and whatnot, and the supporting documentation, I think, you know, depending on each town, that varies as to whether they have all of that, like, it's a lot of information and data, but it's no longer on there, um, and it's something now that I have to submit an O P R request for, I'm just wondering if you can provide any, any insight into why that changed on our website?
What's that?
Oh.
Just during COVID, they were doing virtual meetings.
Oh, is that why the, it was on there?
Because they were doing virtual meetings.
Oh, I see. So, adjust, when I submit an O P R request for stuff like that, I don't necessarily want to see, you know, the whole zip file of stuff, how would it normally be transferred if I were to look at it?
You can come in, you can come into town hall and you can enter if you, if that's easier, or if you want, if you're gonna submit over that, I'm gonna send something to you, you can just give me a specific, you know, place, is that...
Like, oh, like the application form you want, okay, thank you.
Any other counsel for the public? Any other comments from the public? You're in, going to close meeting to the public? Motion to.
Motion to go over closed session?
Second.
Are you? You're not opening up after closed session again. Excuse me?
No action will be taken.
Thank you, okay.